Live in this free country, I just ask Lord to be with the leaders of this nation. Lord that they ask for you for guidance. Be Lord the councils, this city. And I ask for daily for guidance. Uh, just be with those that are sick and afflicted, just hand over. Comfort them, be with those who have lost loved ones, Lord. The things we ask is that I need, amen.
Amen. My question to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening everyone, at this time we will please have roll call.
Mayor Gary Moore.
Present.
City Attorney Darren Rice.
Here.
Alderman Terry Stahl.
Here.
Alderman Alan Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Cheryl Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Eugene McGill.
Present.
Alderman Bruce McKibben.
Here.
Alderman Clifford Reaver.
Here.
Alderman Dewey Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Cody Atterberry.
Here.
And we will continue on, uh, next would be the approval of the minutes of the last council meeting. Uh, has everybody had a chance to read them, are there any corrections to the last minutes of the meeting? If there are none, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Have a first by Alderman Eccleberry, a second by Alderman McGill, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Does anyone wish to abstain? The minutes are approved. Next item would be the approval of the bills that were submitted since the last council meeting. Uh, those also were included in your packet and you've had a chance to review the bills here this evening. Are there any questions on any of the bills? If none, is there a motion to approve the bills that's submitted? I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Alderman Dewey Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Atterberry to approve paying the bills for this meeting. Roll call vote Cheryl Eccleberry.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
McKibben.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterberry.
Yes.
Dewey Eccleberry.
Yes.
And the bills are approved, next would be the public comment section of the meeting. If there's anyone that would wish to address the council, we ask that you raise your hand, I'll call you forward. At this time, is there anyone that would like to address the city council? Seeing none, we will close the public comment sections and move into routine business. Uh, the first item on this evening's agenda is an ordinance authorizing the risk management agreement with I M L. Is that time that we, uh, renew our insurance liability claims? Uh, we did seek a second, uh, bid, uh, and we've had those bids termed in. Uh, in conversations with the insurance committee, um, it's, I believe it will be the recommendation that we continue to stay with risk management. Um, Alderman Reaver, you're the chairman, do you have anything to add?
Nope, it's just, uh, this is one we need to stay with because the other ones, a whole lot more expensive.
And I, I, I can go ahead and talk about the, the bids and then, you know, we had, uh, risk management, of course, give us a bid. Uh, with them, we are on what is considered the Men Max program. Uh, where they establish the, a minimum, uh, you know, of claims they would like to see and a maximum amount of claims they would like to see. And, you know, depending on whether we fall in to that, you know, where we fall into that, whether we owe or not. A meeting with Jim Claussen, uh, the city of Fairfield's been on the Men Max program since they've been here. And he anticipates, uh, through his company that it saved the city about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the life of the, uh, since we've been on the Men Max. Uh, they give us several options, uh, the Men Max option, uh, is two hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Uh, you know, that's, uh, a payment on full options, they give us the options of some installments. Um, the other company, uh, that give us a bid, give us a, a prorated, uh, eleven month policy. Uh, the annual premium would be three hundred and five thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. And the prorated, uh, premium amount would be two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. This company does not have the Men Max program, so, and, you know, one of the things that we wanted to look is to make sure that we kind of prepare apples by apples. The, uh, R M A gives us a option not to participate in the Men Max. And their bid with, without the Men Max was two hundred and thirty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-two. Uh, again, you know, the insurance committee is recommending that we stay with, uh, with R M, uh, R M A. And it would be my recommendation, uh, that we pay the premium in full. Uh, you know, we've got the cash to pay it in full and that would save us about three thousand dollars. Uh, that three thousand dollars is just as good in our pocket as it is in anybody else's. Discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve staying with R M A, uh, Illinois municipally? And paying the premium in full of two hundred and seven thousand nine oh eight seventy-two.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Have a motion by Alderman Reaver, seconded by Alderman Dewey Eccleberry to approve the ordinance authorizing the risk management agreement with I M L. Roll call vote Marsh.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
McKibben.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterberry.
Yes.
Dewey Eccleberry.
Yes.
Cheryl Eccleberry, yes.
And that motion is approved. Um, item number two on the this evening's agenda is the award of bid for the South First Street Patching Project. Uh, we discussed that a little bit last month and, uh, we get, we got some bid openings. That is to repair South First Street where we've had all those water leaks. Uh, from about K and M Diner north to the Hannah House, somewhere around that area. There, there's been about nine, uh, water leaks there that the street and bridge, uh, has had to repair. Uh, we, uh, patched it with, with Blacktop, you know, to kind of do the best that we can in working with the state to kind of see, you know, if we was gonna have any more leaks there and the state's been very good to work with us. But, you know, now it's time that we, we, uh, repair those roads to the state's specifications. Uh, we had a bid opening, um, there were four bids, is that right?
Yes.
There were four bids, uh, given, the, the highest bid was ninety-three thousand three twenty-five. And the low bid was fifty-seven thousand seven fifty-five. Uh, the other bid was seventy-six one eighty-six and eighty-nine nine forty-six. Um, again, we need to repair those, this money will be used, uh, paid with, uh, by motor fuel tax dollars. Um, and so it doesn't come out of the general fund, um. Discussion?
What's the timeframe while getting this repaired?
Uh, well, the, the weather is gonna be a driving factor, you know, how, you know, uh, hopefully they can move as quickly as they can, but we need to make sure that the, the weather stays above, uh, I think forty degrees is the, is the number that I heard so that the concrete cures. Uh, again, there was some discussion of, you know, maybe us doing it ourselves, but, you know, we do not just, we don't have the manpower to get this project completed. Uh, you know, since it's on a state highway, you have to have flaggers, uh, and again, you know, our departments are, you know, busy away. Uh, and so, I mean, it just made more sense, you know, for us to seek bids, uh, and, and let them handle the flagging situation. Let them handle the concrete drying, let them handle, you know, that's their expertise. I, I mean, we will move as quickly as we can, Alderman and Kidd, and, uh, it's, it's gonna be weather driven, I mean, if the temperature drops off, we'll just have to see what we can do.
Okay.
Who got the bid?
Nobody's got the bid yet, that's all we're discussing.
Oh.
It was in your packet.
Yeah.
The contractor was Kenny Contractors Incorporated and they are located out of Raymond, Illinois.
Kiefer Brothers, uh, also submitted a bid. How do you pronounce that last one?
Binnyac and then G N, uh, Sykes Construction. Were the four bidders.
And again, you know, in working with Dave Connor, he, who kind of gives us an estimate of, of what he thinks that, uh, project should cost. I think he was around the one-ten to one-twenty. Or, or one oh four, I'm sorry. So, you know, the bid did come in about half, uh, you know, so it would be my recommendation to the city council that we approve the bid of, of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Who was second?
Terry.
Terry. Have a motion by Dewey Eccleberry, seconded by, uh, Alderman Stahl to award the bid to, um, Kenny Construction Incorporated in the amount of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. And that is for the South First Street Patching Project. Roll call vote McGill.
Yes.
McKibben.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterberry.
Yes.
Dewey Eccleberry.
Yes.
Cheryl Eccleberry.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
And that is approved. Item number three is a supplemental resolution to appropriate motor fuel funds for the Frontier Sidewalk Project. Uh, last meeting, you know, the council approved, uh, you know, the bid that was submitted. Uh, but we need to increase the amount, uh, that will be expended from the motor fuel tax by about an additional twenty thousand dollars. Again, uh, Frontier Community College will contribute, you know, as to the project also. I, I tried to reach Jay today, but he was, he was unavailable to be reached today, um. Discussion?
So this isn't a, oh, this would be our part? On top of the...
When we first started the project, it was just kind of a general estimate. And we have to appropriate motor fuel tax funds for any project before the state okay's it. Uh, we had previously appropriated forty thousand and to cover all of the construction and the engineering costs, we need an additional twenty to cover those costs. So, if that comes in the form of a supplemental resolution.
And the, and the first time it was brought for the council with the original bids, it was injected because it was way too high. Uh, I believe we was, was it within ten percent of, of what Connor and Connor had estimated it to be. So, you know, we, I felt that it was close enough to bring it to the council and see, uh, if they wanted to move forward. Any other discussion? Any concerns?
With the, um, not getting a hold of the college?
The, the college is gonna contribute, actually, I mean, I don't know if it's, yeah, I don't know what it is. Um, but, y- you know, Jay and, and those have given me indication that, you know, that they're willing to help with the project so the city's not going to have to foot the whole bill. And again, you know, it's a safety issue out there with the students, you know, we, you know, we don't want them as a city and they don't want them as a college, you know, walking on the streets and, you know, nighttime going back from a ball game or going back to their homes. And having an opportunity to get struck by motor vehicle.
And by appropriating this extra twenty thousand doesn't mean we have to spend all sixty thousand, correct?
It, it does not, right. But we should be, we ju- we just need the approval, it's kind of like the appropriations, you, you know, we, we need to put that in there. Because, you know, what's had been approved falls a little short.
And if we don't have enough in there appropriated, the state won't okay to pay a certain, um, bill, so...
I'll make it, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Stahl, seconded by Alderman Reaver to approve the supplemental resolution appropriating an additional twenty thousand dollars of motor fuel tax funds for the Frontier Sidewalk Project. Roll call, um, McKibben.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterberry.
Yes.
Dewey Eccleberry.
Yes.
Cheryl Eccleberry, yes. Pardon?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Marsh.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
And that, uh, motion is approved. Um, item number four on this evening's agenda is the approval for a contractor for the fencing around the new water tower on Southwest Seventh Street. Uh, you know, we, we put it out for bids, uh, we failed to get any bids. Uh, we had Connor and Connor take a look at it, uh, he made some contact with some individuals and we had one individual that submitted a bid, uh, for it. Uh, this individual's bid was twenty-two thousand three eighty-seven ninety. Uh, that in, that includes, uh, install an eight-foot-high chain link fence, uh, with ball water strands on the top. A twelve-foot gate and an eight-foot double gate, uh, again, that's to include the nu- the new water tower. And, you know, it's pretty evident that w- w- we need it for safety, uh, you know, uh, we don't, and we need it for se- the security of, of the facility itself. Uh, being that the only bid that we received, uh, and, and hopefully to get the feds installed, uh, quickly before winter gets in and we can't do it till next spring, uh, you know, I would ask that the council approve the bid.
And we move forward. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Alderman Dewey Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Stahl to approve, and the contractor's name is Tom Lucas out of Oakland City, Indiana, uh, to put the fencing around the water tower in the amount of twenty-two thousand three eighty-seven ninety. Roll call, Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Atterberry.
Yes.
Dewey Eccleberry.
Yes.
Cheryl Eccleberry.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
McKibben.
Yes.
And the fencing is approved. Uh, item number five, uh, is the approval of Christmas bonuses for the employees of the city of Fairfield. Uh, it's discussed every year, um, you know, what we're recommending or what I'm recommending does not, has not changed from last year. Uh, and that was, uh, right now we have twenty-four part-time employees. Last year we gave the twenty-four part-time employees a hundred and fifty-dollar bonus. That would cost the city three thousand six hundred dollars. We have sixty full-time employees and the process for the full-time employees, last year we gave two hundred dollars as a bonus. And then we give five dollars for every year of service for those employees. Uh, that will come in at sixteen thousand one twenty-five for a total of nineteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for the total. That includes, uh, everybody within the city. Uh, the council a few years ago also approved that the mayor and the city clerk, uh, get those same full-time bonuses. Uh, the mayor will decline his bonus. I, um, so, discussions on that. Uh, and I'm gonna ask, this is usually paid the first pay period in December. Uh, I'm going to maybe ask that, um, the twenty-four and the sixty, I believe that's an accurate count as of today. I'm just gonna ask that, uh, that, uh, that these bonuses be given out to anybody who's on the payroll as of today. Questions?
Sir, are you gonna bust these up for the city and the volunteer?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Any questions? And so, if there are no questions, I'm, I'm gonna ask that we do this in two ways. The first motion I'm gonna ask for is a motion to approve all employees except the Fairfield Fire Department. The, and the volunteer fire department.
Just the volunteer?
Yeah.
Are you doing the whole fire department?
The, the whole fire department.
Okay, I'll get that right.
So, I'm, the first motion I would like to be to, to approve the I B E W, city employees, uh, the, the library board. And, and, and there's a reason why, you know, Alderman McGill i- is a volunteer fireman. Uh, so, I want to let him vote on part of it and he will abstain on the other part. That's the only reason I'm breaking them up. Um, does everybody understand that? Everybody okay with that? So, with that, is there a motion to approve the Christmas bonuses for all employees excluding the Fairfield Fire Department and volunteer firefighters?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Alderman Dewey Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman McKibben to approve the bonuses for the full-time and part-time employees. Roll call vote Stahl.
Yes.
Atterberry.
Yes.
Dewey Eccleberry.
Yes.
Cheryl Eccleberry.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
McKibben.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
And that motion approves. Uh, we'll mo- m- move on to the next item. Kidnapped. At this time, I would like a motion to approve the bonuses for the Fairfield Fire Department and all volunteer fire departments associated with that group. Is there a motion to approve the same bonuses for the Fairfield Fire Department and the volunteer fire?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Alderman Dewey Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Atterberry to approve the bonuses for the fire department and volunteers. Roll call votes, uh, Atterberry.
Yes.
Dewey Eccleberry.
Yes.
Cheryl Eccleberry.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
McGill.
Abstain.
McKibben.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
And that motion approves. Uh, the last item on the agenda is a discussion about the December twenty-sixth council meeting of last year. Uh, maybe, maybe for the last couple of years, the council has decided that we do not need to hold that meeting. But, but having said that, and I've reached out to the finance committee, you know, to try to schedule a finance committee. Before the second Tuesday of December, we have to approve the tax levy. Uh, so, we've got two meetings left that we can approve the tax levy in working with the finance committee. Uh, you, you know, it would be our recommendation, uh, that hopefully that we can bring the tax levy proposal in front of the city council on the November twenty-eighth meeting, I believe it is. If not, if it doesn't pass then, we have to have something passed by the first Tu- by the second Tuesday. So we would have, uh, you know, the first meeting in December. If we can get that done, uh, you know, then the council can say that we will not have a December twenty-sixth meeting, which will be the day after Christmas. Everybody understand what I just rattled off quickly? Okay, all right, so, uh, there's nothing to vote on and we, do we need to vote on?
Uh, we did last year.
Okay, we did last year, so...
And we also authorized in that same motion to have the treasurer pay any bills that's necessary to pay. If there's some that's due by a certain time, she can be authorized to go ahead and pay those.
So what we're looking for here is, is an, a motion that we will not have a December twenty-sixth meeting as long as a couple of things fall into place, that the tax levy is passed within the next two meetings. And if we choose not to, we will not, uh, we will authorize Ms. Warren to pay the bills that are submitted, uh, for payment between the first Tuesday of December and end of the, end of the last meeting.
So you need a motion on that, mayor?
Yes.
I'll make it.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion by Alderman McGill, seconded by Alderman Cheryl Eccleberry to approve canceling, canceling the twenty-sixth meeting in December and to have the treasurer pay invoices that are due. And that is, uh, as long as the tax levy is passed with that stipulation. Roll call vote, Atterberry.
Yes.
Dewey Eccleberry.
Yes.
Cheryl Eccleberry.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
McKibben.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
And that motion is approved. Uh, that would, uh, bring us to the financial report, uh, I believe I passed out a financial report. Andrew's still here. Andrew's still here. Real quickly, we'll run over the financial report as of October thirty-first in twenty-twenty-three. For the month of October, the city had expenses of one million seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand sixteen dollars. October revenues came in at one million nine fifty-six oh ninety, uh, for a positive cash flow of, uh, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand seventy-four dollars. The column next to you, just, just talking year-to-date, uh, numbers. Uh, year-to-date expenses for the city of Fairfield are nine million five hundred and seventy-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-two. Uh, we have revenues of nine million four twenty-four one-ten. Uh, that shows a net loss of a hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and twelve. Cash flow for the month of October was at a positive two hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-four. Year-to-date is a negative five hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred and sixty. Payroll for the month of October was three hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-seven. Year-to-date, that, that, that number can't be right, so we'll skip that number. Uh, gaming income for the month of October was eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars. Year-to-date is seventy-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine. Sales tax co- uh, income was a hundred and thirty-nine, three hundred and seventy-eight, and year-to-date is eight hundred thousand three hundred and twenty-five. Um, our general checking fund balance at the end of the month was at one million four hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars and three cents. Uh, also, to the right there, you know, we, we've made mention several times that we have, uh, installed eight hundred thousand dollars in an interest-bearing CD for the city. And the, the balance of that is eight hundred and nine thousand two hundred and seventeen. So, um, you know, it's, it's positive that the city has only lost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars year-to-date. You know, the city is a non-for-profit organization, but we can generate, uh, income to take care of things that come up in the future, vehicles or whatever. Any questions on the financials? Anything under miscellaneous that anybody would like to discuss?
I was just wondering where we were at with the houses that were being, people found?
Um, the burned-out building that is on four-oh-seven, well, it's on Northwest Fifth Street. Uh, that one is ready to go. I have, uh, prepared a complaint. I'm just getting that signed up, and then we'll... Um, on some, on these ones that were, whenever we did this, what, in July, uh, we sent out, Jim?
Yes.
Uh, we sent out a letter to the property owners, giving them the option to, uh, convey the property to the city. And we would, and I didn't get any response from that. Well, I, that's not true. I got one response from that. That's on the one at one-thirteen East Main Street. That person, um, you know, he responded, didn't wanna do that. Uh, I've got the, the notice that's required to be sent to them before we can proceed. That's already been sent to them. So I think between the letter and the notice going out, he's applied for a building permit. And so, I, we're kind of keeping an eye on that, but that's not gonna interfere with the process because if he fixes it, then he complied.
Right.
If he does not, then at least we have some momentum going to try to take care of that issue. Uh, the one that's on Illinois Avenue, that one, uh, is not ready right now for prime time. That is, uh, the owner, there's an ownership issue on that one. The person who was there, uh, passed away, but that's not even the biggest problem with that. And I won't go into all the details. There's, there's an issue regarding the title on that. That's gonna be very difficult to fix, so I'm working on that as well. Um, there's some other properties that we've been working on, including, uh, the one that's on Walker Street. That's gonna be in court, and hopefully in December, we'll get that finalized. Um, I'm trying to see if there's another one that's, um, or that's just kind of something I was scheduled. It's on my mind right now about them, but the, the other ones are making some progress on them, so...
I know there's a few other ones, and I didn't know if I would, if, if I would like present that to the mayor or to you about questions about a few other ones that are in town.
Yeah, just let me know which one. I mean, are you saying that these ones that are new, that, uh...
Well, I don't know if they're on your list or not. We, we haven't discussed them at the, here at the meeting.
Okay, well, just tell me which one they are. I'll, I'll take, I'll try to get any since we're about to... All right, thanks. I don't have one in college, so I don't know. So I don't know what that's...
Any other questions under miscellaneous? Seeing none, uh, at this time, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Anyone wish to abstain? Meeting adjourned.